And welcome to the February 6, 2024, meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode. And if you would please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
President Zerella.
Here.
Councillor Boishman.
President.
Councillor Kuchar.
Here.
Councillor Craigan.
Here.
Councillor Cruz.
Here.
Councillor Dean Atali.
Here.
Councillor Fleming.
Here remotely and in the dark.
Councillor Green.
Here.
Councillor Schultz.
Here remotely.
Councillor Ian Hasinger.
Here.
And Councillor Walsh.
Here.
We have 11 members present.
Thank you very much. We have only one person signed in for public comment. As this sign-in sheet business is new as of this year, after we take that one person, anyone else who wishes to comment and didn't realize they had to sign in will be allowed to. We will be phasing that out as the year goes on. So first, I have Charles Piumarini. You may approach the center podium. Please identify yourself for the record by name and city of -- oh, actually, I'm sorry, we have that already.
Charles Piumarini, Fitchburg, Mass.
And which item on the agenda would you like to address the council on?
I'm here to address the Reed Street situation.
I'm sorry, the what?
The Reed Street situation. I think I put in a term for engineering.
031, okay, excellent, thank you. And you may speak for two minutes.
Yeah, just a -- it's a big concern that the runoff, it's a dead-end street, and it is on a hill, and the runoff that is coming off of the wetlands is making, is eating, eroding the road, number one. Number two, it's creating a sheet of ice from the top of the street all the way to the bottom. And if it was just a little ice, it wouldn't be a concern, but we're talking about a three-inch thick piece of ice that, all the way down the street. And it stops mail from being delivered, garbage from being picked up. Tragically, my neighbor lost her daughter. She had an issue just trying to get her daughter out of her house. Of course, that's, it doesn't always happen, but it, I've fallen many times, twisted ankles, and, and the road is sinking. So it needs to be addressed, whether it's trying to find out where to make the water go or to stop the water from coming in. And it happens to be a pretty significant runoff due to one house that they built in 2018. And not to place blame on anything, because it's already been done, we just need to fix and rectify the issue of the runoff and what it's doing to, number one, my property, because my property is becoming wetland also. So saying that, that's what I got.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further public comment at this time? You can approach the center podium. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence and the agenda item on which you wish to speak.
Yes, my name is Kim Goodwin. I live in Fitchburg, up on Mountain Laurel Lane, and I am here to speak in support of petition 030-24 regarding the offensive odors up in Oak Ridge. We have lived up there since 2005, and in the past three to four years, there has been a very distinctive odor that comes usually in the later of the day, and it varies from raw sewage smell to raw egg smell. And depending on where you are, let's call it altitude-wise, the odor comes up usually late in the day, and once it starts, it's usually there all evening. I have records that I sent through Clickfix and emails to the Board of Health back in June of 2022, and there has been no definitive action that we have heard or seen, but everybody that we talked to, and we say, "Oh yeah, the smell in West Fitchburg." Everybody, "Oh yeah, what is that?" We drive through West Fitchburg and we smell it, and it's like, "It's awful." Yes, we live with it every day. I say every day. This time of year, it doesn't appear to be too bad, so I'm guessing the colder air keeps something from being active or something. But we would very much like to have at least some positive activity to try to determine where this is coming from. We do believe it's coming from, and I apologize if I get the name wrong, but grief, griff, however you say it, we believe it's coming from there. We did hear from one city employee from the Health Department, his name escapes me right now, but he had said at that time, yes, it is griff, and the DEP is involved. Where does it go from there? We don't know. So we would strongly support Mr. Kuchar's petition to see if we can get to the bottom of this, to see why that smell is there and why we have to keep tolerating, because it does affect our quality of life. In the summer on the hot nights, we have to keep our windows closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment at this time? You can come up to the podium. You know the drill.
Good evening. Could I speak on two?
I'd go right ahead.
Okay. My name is Michael Kuchar. I live at 528 Sheldon Road, and I'd like to speak on petitions 033 and 034. 033, obviously, I'm in favor of it invol -- not 033, I'm sorry, 034 and 035. 034 is putting a stop sign at the bottom of Stickney Road at the intersection with Ashburn Anne Street, which is Route 12, very busy road. There is no stop sign there. I don't believe there ever was ever a stop sign there. And 035 is at my intersection of Stickney and Sheldon Road, which never used to be an issue, but now we have a lot more houses at the other end of Sheldon Road, which means the traffic is three times as heavy. And I understand they have to go to public safety first, but I just appreciate your consideration in both of those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, February 8, from 4 until 5:30 p.m. in room 205 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. There is a climate change workshop on Zoom Thursday, this Thursday, sorry, next Thursday, February 15, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., and you can register for that. There is also an in-person meeting at the senior center, and that is this Thursday, February 8, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. The first meeting will discuss the concept of nature-based solutions and will solicit input as to specific issues affecting the community and places that could be good sites for nature-based solutions. The Zoom meetings will then follow on that, discussing the recommended sites and how they could apply those solutions. Ward 1 City Councillor Bernie Schultz is hosting a Ward 1 community meeting on Monday, February 12, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. here in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street. Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority Executive Megan Donahue and Fitchburg Airport Manager Peter Kettle will make presentations, then answer questions. In addition to Ward 1 residents, all other Fitchburg residents are welcome to attend. Councillor Kuchar will also be hosting a Ward 3 meeting, February 15, at 6 o'clock here in the Legislative Building. Excuse me. The city clerk would like to remind you to please fill out and return your 2024 census. You can mail it, drop it off at the clerk's office, or drop it in the drop box outside City Hall, but please make sure it is signed. The state has mailed out vote-by-mail postcards for the March 5 primary. If you choose to vote by mail, please complete the postcard and return it to the city clerk's office. If on your postcard you have the option of a party ballot, this means you are registered as unenrolled, and you must choose which party ballot, Democratic, Republican, or independent, will be mailed to you. Lastly, we are, as we speak, enjoying the excellent services of FATV, our local access channel. They have been serving this city for a very long time and doing an excellent job of it. Even the infrastructure of this building itself is largely due to their support and assistance. They are currently funded by a fee on cable, and as we all know, cable is dying, and so is their funding stream, therefore. There is legislative action pending in the House and Senate that will identify an alternate funding stream and protect local cable access, including our own FATV. So please contact State Representative Mike Kusmerick to support House Bill H74, and Senator John Cronin to support Senate Bill S34. This is listed in my announcements, but it's also a personal plea from me. FATV is excellent. We need them to continue providing their services, not only to the government, but to the community at large. So please, anything you can do to move the needle on this, please take action. Next, we have a report of the Appointments Committee. Councillor Kuchar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We took up two new appointments and one reappointment. The new appointments were for the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire February 6, 2029, Robert J. Talbot, which was approved, and the other new appointment for the Fitchburg Cultural Council, term to expire February 6, 2027, Mr. Joseph Bowen, that stand approved, and a reappointment to the Fitchburg Disability Commission, term to expire February 1, 2027, Mr. Basil Tolos, which stands approved.
Thank you very much.
Make your motion when you accept.
I have a motion and second. On the motion, I would just like to note for the council, I know everyone here knows who Joe Bowen and Basil Tolos are. Many of you, I think, may not know Rob Talbot, except as the recent challenger for Ward 5. I've known him for, actually, longer than I've been on the council, stemming from a zoning interaction, actually, many years ago, where there was a problem property in the neighborhood, and he and a number of neighbors needed some help. And I'd like, I'd just like to say that in the time I've known him, I can't say I know him exceptionally well, but I've known him to be a very thoughtful and dedicated member of the community and someone who pays close attention to the health and welfare of his neighborhood and the community at large. So I thank the mayor for her appointment, and I think he will make an excellent member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I appreciate that, President Zerella. Thank you.
No problem. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Thank you and congratulations to our new returning members. Report of the Committee on Records. Councillor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've examined the records, and they appear to be in order.
Make your motion, accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there's no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, the report is approved. We have an annual report, the Independent Auditor's Report, for the year ending June 30, 2023. If there is no objection, we will waive the reading and place that on file with the city clerk's office, where it will be available to any members of the public who wish to inspect it. Seeing no objection, it will be placed on file. Sorry, I think I've done enough of these to wing it. Oh, I'm sorry, it's right here, actually. We don't have that many public hearings before the council, so sometimes I forget exactly the order of operations. We have before us two public hearings this evening. With the consent of council, I'll take these out of order, since I see that we have a representative of Unitil here for 006, and I believe these ones usually don't take very long. So seeing no objection, we'll take 006-24, Unitil to petition for a new poll, number 1-51, approximately 650 feet south of Drepanos Drive, and approximately 1,020 feet north of View Street, as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open.
Good evening. John Kimball, representing Unitil. The purpose of this stub pole is, basically, there's a guy wire that's in a tree right now. In order to remove that guy wire, we need to set a pole to transfer the wire to. There's no other option, otherwise, the pole needs to be supported, and right now it's being supported by a tree. So we need to set a stub pole, and the anchor, we would use a sidewalk anchor, so that it would, the anchor would stay away from the stone wall, because there is a stone wall right there.
All right, any questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Boishman.
Yeah, I was talking to my friend Tom up there. I had a very hard time understanding your print. I even went up to you. I thought you were going to remove Pole 36. I think it is, it's got the vines growing up, and it looks like a two-pick. It's all small and that, with a transformer on it. It was right in front of number 36, the property 36. And I said, "Where the heck is this pole?" And I even went to see Tom. I said, "Where the heck is this pole going?" I couldn't find it.
I had a stake at one point before all the snowstorms.
Oh, you had a stake there. I never saw the stake.
Yep.
So I was just wondering if you make prints, if you can highlight it better where they were going, so I have a good idea, because I went all the way past 36, all the way down, Flat Rock, and I said, "It can't be this far." I noticed you get 1 to 51. I says, "He ain't gonna put new poles from 1 to 51."
No, so our numbering, so it'd be 1 if you go on the left-hand side as you're going upstream, it's 1-1, on the right is 1-51. That's why it was indicated that way, but I will make sure that it's more clear on the next one.
I appreciate it very, very much. And by the way, well, I'm stood at the floor, right? I noticed you get pink ribbons around a lot of the trees going up that road. Are we planning on cutting them?
So, yes. So the school is seeking to get three-phase power up to a new dormitory. In order to do that, those trees are going to have to either be trimmed or removed. I can't speak to whether trimming or removing, I'm not the arborist.
What if you remove them, if you cut them down?
So councillor, councillor, I appreciate the info, thank you, but since the trimming of trees or the removal of trees is not the subject of the public hearing, let's save that for another time.
Well, I was just gonna ask the question about the stubs.
No, I understand, but that's not what we've got a public hearing open for.
Well, it's part of Unitil. All right. You give me a hard time, see, you're lucky tonight. All right, I'm making motion when you accept, if nobody else got a question.
Just a moment. Councillor Ian Hasinger.
So is the pole going to be located in the sidewalk or just off the sidewalk in the right-of-way?
So there isn't a sidewalk right there. It's gonna be in a green area.
Okay, and it's gonna be anchored with a wire down?
Correct.
And that's, you said it's gonna stay off the stone wall, it's gonna be out of the road?
Yes.
Be there, but then...
Yeah, I had a stake out there, which I'm more than happy to put another one out there. Yeah, it's gonna be in the green space, and then the anchor's gonna be right behind it, but it will be on the stone, on this side of the stone wall, on the roadside.
Councillor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the installation of this pole, if it doesn't happen, how will that interrupt service?
So it's not gonna interrupt service. Eventually, that tree is gonna die, that it is, that the guy wires are in right now, which would affect service, because once those guy wires come out, we have to set a pole in order to support the pole number one. So at some point, I, anytime I find tree guy wires, I try to get rid of them, because trees don't last forever.
And how much of a public safety concern is it right now?
Right now? Well, it's, at some point, that tree is going to fail, and the guy wires are gonna fail.
So it's just, right now, it's more of a nuisance than anything else?
Yep, it's a nuisance at the moment, but it will become public safety at some point.
Okay. I don't know how, Mr. President, if you'll indulge me on this. This body and these, my colleagues here, we do everything we can to alleviate the burden, and I know, Mr. Kimball, that you're just here representing Unitil, but we do everything we can to alleviate the burden of the high costs of Unitil, of the company. We talk to the DPU, we make concerns to the Attorney General, the powers that be, the people who make these choices for the cost, they, they don't listen, falls on deaf ears. And if it's not a legitimate public safety concern, I'm feeling like maybe we should say no to this and continue to call attention to the issues that the residents have with Unitil. I'm not gonna support this. I yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So following on that question, I wonder, is there a cost savings in doing it as preventative maintenance rather than waiting for it to fail? Quite aside from the public safety issue, which obviously is a concern, is there a cost savings in doing it now rather than later?
Yeah, so it, we don't know when it's gonna fail, so it could fail in the middle of the night, so that's overtime rates, never mind the fact that it's gonna cause outage. And there's a water pump station that's upstream of us, and also the interruption that it will cause to multiple customers. And setting another pole in the middle of the night isn't a five-minute process. It's several hours, and then having to transfer everything, and then we're gonna end up having to find another tree to attach it to, because I won't have had a pole to put it to. We can't set a pole if we don't have permission.
Understood. All right, thank you. Councillor Ian Hasinger.
Just real quick, I do appreciate the concern over costs with Unitil, but I think effective maintenance of the infrastructure is important, and I think we do have to make sure that we don't have interruptions in service. So I think this is, I don't have any objection to this proposal.
Councillor Green.
Mr. Kimball, would this be considered part of the, like, the standard operating procedure, where Unitil is aware that in years past, there have been wires supported by trees, that you're trying to eliminate that standard of practice and go to something more uniform, so that when you see it, here, we're the body that would say, "Yeah, we can't have that, because that's not how we want to have a standard for how we address issues like this."
Right, and Unitil has only owned the poles for, I believe, it's six years now, so some of these guy wires that we're trying to remove, wasn't our company that put them in. We're just trying to correct situations that, the, the new practice is, we do not put them in trees at all, if that answers the question.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, we, we're not gonna cause a future problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this petition?
My name's Tom Donnelly. I live on Prospect Street. I think I got this in the mail, but I didn't get a map. So most of you know I have quite a few tools. It's very difficult to measure 1,000 feet in one direction and 600 in the other. If you called, if you call for a DigSafe number, you call 811, you get the number, and you're supposed to say where it is to the closest intersection. I don't understand why they couldn't put down close to the intersection of Flat Rock Road, Burbank Street, and Prospect Street. That's the nearest intersection. Every pole is marked with a number. I went out, I didn't, I wasn't gonna measure 1,000 on one side or 650 on the other side, north and south. They didn't say Prospect Street, they didn't say Drepanos Drive, they didn't say Flat Rock Road. So what is a consumer supposed to do? I'm questioning how many people here went out to check it out, but I was lost to, like, a little more information. All they had to do was give an address. Very simple, and I'm not saying that you did it, because I, I've watched some of the Unitil representatives on the hot seat, and they're not the ones that actually did it, they just have to come to do the presentation. But I am upset at the way this was presented, because between pole this and this, every pole's numbered. Now, years ago, when you had a hearing, some poles were owned by Unitil, and some poles were owned by AT&amp;T or Verizon, whatever the other one it is. Now they're all owned by Unitil, because they came to some sort of agreement that they would take care of everything. So I'm, the pole's not the issue, the description of the location is the issue. But just as a consumer, I thought it's made it very difficult to find out where it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Since this is an issue that has been raised twice now, if no one, either in the council or in the audience, has any objection, I'd like to make a brief comment before we proceed to further input from the public. Would it be, would it potentially be a solution, or one that Unitil could implement, to include, in addition to the schematic drawing, or whatever the official name of the plan is, possibly something on the lines of a GIS map that indicates the location as well, just so that people can more easily get their bearings and see, "Oh, okay, I know what this building is, so it's a little down from that," and so on?
Okay, so street addresses, and just make it more specific.
That would be, I think that would solve some of the problems that you're hearing tonight. Just, it, obviously, the submissions are at your discretion, what you submit is what we work with, but I think that would probably be helpful going forward.
I will make sure that gets done.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in support of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is before the council.
Motion to approve, as laid out, 006-24.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there, and all in favor?
Aye.
In opposition?
Aye.
One in opposition? The motion passes by a vote of 10 to 1.
Who is the motion, 10 to 1?
Yes, 10 to 1.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You, too. Next, we have a public hearing, 004-24, on an order laying out a portion of Ethier Street as a public way, a public street or way, as outlined in the enclosed order. I now declare the hearing open. Do we have someone here presenting on this issue? I believe previously, this had been presented to the council by the legal department. Has the... Has the solicitor had an opportunity to get up to speed on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Council President. For the record, Adam Costa, city solicitor. We have had an opportunity to review the paperwork, which is a part of your meeting package for this evening, and the paperwork does appear to be in order.
Thank you. All right, so is the council, has the council had a chance to become familiar with this matter? All right, then in lieu of a presentation, I suppose I'll simply move straight to comments or questions from councilors. All right. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in opposition? All right, if all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is before the council.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the order laying out Ethier Street as a public way. Anyone on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In opposition? All right, motion passes unanimously, 11 to 0. If I'd known it would be out that quick, I wouldn't have taken it out of order. Next, we have some orders from Finance. 01824 is being withdrawn at the request of the school department due to some changes in funding logistics. And then with the consent of council, I will waive the reading of orders 01924 through 02924, and they will all stand referred to the Finance Committee. All right. Next, we have 03024, which I would recommend that the council refer to the Board of Health with a request for a report back to council on the board's finding, on the board or Health Department's findings.
So move.
So move. Anyone on the motion? If there is no objection, all right, that will be referred to the Board of Health and/or Health Department. 031, 032, and 033. Mr. President. 24. Councilor Kucher.
03324, on information and belief, it appears that the trench that was on the side of the road at 112 Sheldon Road has been fixed by the property owner who is building a new structure on that property. So I'm withdrawing that petition.
All right, any objection to the withdrawal? All right, that will be withdrawn. So 031 and 03224 stand referred to Public Works. 034 and 03524 stand referred to Public Safety. 03624 stands referred to Legislative Affairs. And 03724 stands referred to City Property. That concludes the business of the evening.
Make your motion when you adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. But I would like to remind the viewing public again to please do anything you can to support our efforts to continue public access television.